I get some of the small businesses and everything. I mean, I'm sure they're valid outcomes, which is great. But it just seems like there's such a large disparity. And to give back to my original question, how do we make up that rate?
Can I start with saying why? If I may.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Part of the reason, I kind of wanted to go on it. Part of the reason you're seeing that difference in the shift is because when a commercial first level is heard, we're now getting the information that we asked for prior to the reassessment. And so people tend to come in and give you income and expense documents, rent rolls and things like that. In Pennsylvania, you don't have to give that prior to a reassessment. In other states, you do. So we're making those types of adjustments once we actually get the documentation, the documentation that we asked for upfront in hand. But go ahead.
So we had the results of most of those first level reviews as we were putting the budget together. So that level of change is actually already built into the budget?
So these are, it's already built into the budget?
Yes.
So we don't have to make up that, whatever calculation that is for the revenue that we, for the overall aggregate?
Yeah, essentially we already...
So if we have $1.3 billion in property revenue coming in, and we have a decrease of several millions?
Right.
You know?
So that's built into the budget. If the BRT appeals go differently from how we've projected in the budget, that's either going to be an increase or a loss against the budget. And then we'd have to look at how to make up for that. But this part, we've already accounted for.
Okay, well, when we catch up, maybe offline, you can...
Okay.
At another time. My other question, I know we have a lot. So I want to at least get my two questions in on this. It was more of the bigger concern that I've had, you know, question. And the other one is, when we're talking about the amount of, for homestead. So there was, to my calculation, we have roughly about 70,000 qualified homeowners who have not either applied or were granted a homestead. I think applied.
Yeah, I think it may be a little more than that. I think, well, you can... I think it's about 90.
It's about 90. So 90,000 Philadelphians who are eligible for a homestead exemption have not filled out their paperwork for review. Do we know how many of them are seniors? Because that's a concern, that's a concern of mine. And if you were collaborating with the mayor's office of aging, because I think the number, although the senior tax rees increased, I think that's the ongoing continued pressure of the combination of council members and their district and knowing them, as well as OPA and some of the grassroots efforts we have trying to communicate with our senior groups. So I'm just becoming more, increasingly concerned that a large portion of those, of 90,000, are seniors.
Well, we did have of the...
She identified herself before, yeah.
Of the 232,000 that were approved, 2046 were approved through the senior tax rees. So that's something that we could continue to work with revenue as far as the people that they have enrolled in the program, but...
Right, and I think, you know, and I said this last year, last year's budget, you know, not... So, I mean, we're an old city, right? I mean, we're an old couple, but as far as the city's concerned, I mean, you know, I have 55% of my district is 55 and older, right? And that was a few years ago. So it's, as we move forward, and there was only a small part of the city seniors that were receiving any kind of services, you know, from, you know, that we provide. So, you know, I'm just concerned that we, in addition to the senior rees, that they haven't filled out their homestead exemption. And for some reason, I don't know if it's bad service or what, we just need to target the seniors a little more aggressively, I think, with the remaining homestead opportunities that we have.
I agree.
Great.
Actually, while you're there, is there any other targeted group that you might be looking at to try to find those other homestead applicants?
Well, based on the way that we've been able to map it, knowing the approvals, and then the people that we believe are eligible but have not yet applied, there's definitely, I think, a language barrier.
I was just going to ask about the language, yeah.
So we had created materials in several other languages, as well as our call center, which callers can conduct a call in any language. But I think now that we kind of can isolate this population of people who haven't applied, as well as, I think, more low-income residents that could certainly benefit from this, I think we'll be able to direct our efforts to them.
So you're still looking at that kind of stuff?
Even more.
Sure.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Squillor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. During the appeal process, I know you guys have the assessors going out. Now, when they go, does the BRT use assessors to determine what they think the value is?
Okay, when we have BRT hearings, they may ask us to go out and make an inspection, or they may ask us what we think about the property. Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, they'll ask...
All right, so they don't really have their own assessors. They just go by what you tell them why, why you came up with this particular assessment.
Yeah, we are asked how we came up with a value. We explain it. We give comparables, and then they ask certain questions of us and the appellant.
Okay. Right now, I guess, are you in the process of, what is the date we will receive new assessments for next year?
If you got new assessments next year, it would be February, the week of February 15th. It would be mid-February.
Same this year.
Yeah. My goal is to have them come out every year at the same time. That way, people get familiar with when this happens.
So next year, around February 15th, we should get most of the assessment? Everybody will get new assessment? Because I know...
If your assessment changes, you'll get a, you know, if we have a reassessment, okay, that's first thing.
Oh.
But if we don't, if we do, if your assessment changes, then you'll get a notice. If it doesn't change, you won't get a notice.
Okay, last year at the budget, weren't we told that they're going to reassess the city every year?
That was the goal, but that was prior to us having things occur, such as the situation with the board.
Right. So, yeah, well, we didn't believe it last year either, so...
I tried.
It would have been impossible if you did it.
Some things will be all by control, I tried.
You might have been flying around the room if you were able to do that. So if they do get reassessed next year, it would be just changes. And right now, you're concentrating, I guess, just on the appeals at this point?
Right. All I can do right now is just address the appeals because I don't know what's scheduled for when, going forward, in enough time. And so all I can do is just address appeals.
All right, so now, we're not, we're not going, you're not actively going out reassessing anywhere in the city this year?
No, we haven't done anything reassessment-wise yet.
Okay.
For next year.
So our goal at this point, moving forward, is in 2015, very unlikely, will there be many changes to assessments, or...
Going forward, period. Now that we've done AVI, I doubt very seriously that, and our initial goal was for every neighborhood that, because the assessments were so drastically different from what they were selling for. But now that we're closer, only the areas that are significantly, you know, I would say, moving will actually see a lot of increases. Because our assessments, if they hold true and the market doesn't move rampantly, and I doubt very seriously it moves like it did in the early 2000s. Prior, you know, short of that happening, the assessments and the sale prices in a lot of areas will still be pretty much the same, and we won't have to make any changes in those areas.
So there's not going to be a, I know, like last year, we tested, the goal was to do it every year, do the whole city every year.
Right.
That was the goal, which was really hard to reach. And now, you know, then we had thought, maybe, is it possible to do assessments if you're going to be citywide, to go through and assess the areas, you know, certain areas that you can do, maybe every four years you would get reassessed, depending on year?
No, see, we can't do it that. When I say we're doing a reassessment, that means the entire city's being looked at. But only the areas that need changes will change. We can't just look at one area and not look at the entire city. Anytime we do a reassessment, it'll be a comprehensive citywide reassessment. So no one will unfairly not be looked at versus someone else.
All right, so unless you do a citywide reassessment, nobody will be changed?
That's right. Unless they have things like new construction, or tear down, or some significant permit work, or subdivision, things like that, nobody will be changed.
All right, because it would be illegal to do just a...
It would be illegal to just itemize someone out just because their area was hot, not attempt to get the rest of the city.
All right. At this point, I know the question was asked before, but out of the, I guess, the people that go to the BRT or have appealed to the BRT, do you know how many people that you were able to change before it got to the board, or at this point?
We'd have to get that. That's similar report that Mr. ...
Johnson asked.
Councilman Johnson asked.
Okay.
So we'd have to get that for you.
Can I ask more? I'll come back?
If he could, because we have people that lined up again. Councilman Good?
Quick question for the record. During the assessment process, do you know if a property is tax abated or in proximity to another property is tax abated?
We'll know if there's an abatement on the property, and I'll have to ask Mr. Piper to come up and talk about that. But I don't know that we know if it's near something that has an abatement.
So if you're asking about a specific property, we can find out, you know, if the abating...
During the assessment process in general, as properties are being, were assessed, did you know whether a property was tax abated or in proximity to another property that was tax abated?
No.
So you do not know the effect of tax abated properties on the value of other properties?
No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't know that. I'll be honest, we would. When we do a reassessment, we're just looking at properties that have sold, the current market versus the current assessments. And if a property has an abatement, its assessment will increase. But as far as what is located by, a property being located something with an abatement, we don't, we wouldn't pay that any attention.
Have you heard the contention that tax abated properties have land values that are lower than they should be?
Yeah, I've heard some contention about land values in general, but yes. And that's something that we, you know, we were looking to look to address going forward. We knew that we'd gotten questions about the land, and so we knew in some areas we had to look at that.
Exactly. How will you handle the analysis of how tax abated properties affect the assessment system in terms of the properties themselves and/or their proximity to tax abated properties?
If a property has an abatement, typically, it will have a different condition code because oftentimes those are newer properties. And so its condition code will be different relative to everything else on a particular block. And so generally speaking, going forward, we'll make sure that those properties have condition code that they want, and hypothetically, they would normally have a higher assessment. Hypothetically, it depends on the market, but typically, they would have a higher assessment. Now, things that are around it, you know, we don't, we don't do any analysis on what's around it because every property stands on its own. And so we don't do an analysis on whether a property had an abatement and what's around it. We just do whether that property, individual property's value was, what it could sell for, and whether it's equalized, whether it makes sense relative to the rest of the block.
You've worked in other jurisdictions where there was a tax abatement program?
Sure.
And did you see an impact of the tax abatement program on the value of properties?
Sure. Richmond, Virginia is a good example. They had a very active abatement program, and it was targeted, though, in areas that they wanted to revitalize.
And it was done right?
And so it was very effective as far as getting those areas back up to part of that in the market.
And so the policy was strategic?
Sure, yes, sir. And they, even since I left, I've been gone for almost 10 years now. They have taken it away from areas that they felt, they reduced the amount of the abatement for certain properties.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Reynolds Brown?
Yes. Forgive me for beating a dead horse on this staffing matter, but I have a couple of ideas that I have to work on after I get additional information. What are the minimum requirements prior to enrolling in the certification program?
Ms. Daniel will come up and share those.
Sure, the general skill set that one should come to the table with prior to enrolling in the program.
The position, as you know, is a civil service position. So the specs on that job, it's three qualifiers. One is to have a bachelor's degree.
A bachelor's degree.
And one year of...
That is required, okay.
That's one, that's one qualification. A bachelor's degree and one year of experience in the real estate industry. And I think, I'm not sure of the exact specifics, but I think it's like in a bank or mortgage company or something like that. The other is, I think, six years with a jurisdiction. This is no degree. And it's six years in another taxing jurisdiction like ours.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's six years. And then the other is, the six, yeah, the six years as a salesperson.
Okay.
And that's also without a degree.
Without a degree?
Without. So there are only, there are three qualifiers, two, one is with a degree and one year of experience. And the other is very specific, either real estate experience or taxing jurisdiction experience.
Okay, all right, then that's helpful. Thank you. The last question I have here, we have gotten, my office has gotten a number of cases around vacant land. Can you share with us how vacant land is assessed and what factors are considered in the final assessment? Number one. Number two, then point my, point me the direction of the staffer professional that handles sub, subdivisions, sub, what do you call it?
Subdivision.
Thank you very much.
All right, the staffer that handles subdivisions is Kilroy. Vincent Battistelli. Okay, so we'll get you, Vincent Battistelli Jr. is the individual who handles subdivisions. But if you send us something, we'll get whatever you need down to him. Vacant land was looked at with a model that was for residential specifically, was looked at with a model that was provided by Dr. Gillen.
Doctor?
Dr. Kevin Gillen.
Okay.
He helped us with that. And the theory of his model was that property, vacant land, well, land value should be looked at not just whether they're vacant, but whether they're improved or not. And so sales were looked at, starting from center city and moving out towards the actual neighborhoods. And he devised rates based on sales for, I think, like a five-year period, and time adjusted them to determine what any particular rate should be for any particular area.
Okay.
And then after that, we looked at them to try to make sure that they were as equitable as possible. Our biggest problem with vacant land going forward, and we've already worked on some of this, is issues with the zoning. When you're looking at vacant land, you want to look at what is zoned. And he has a theory, and I would somewhat agree that if you can get a zoning variance with no problem, then zoning really doesn't have as much of an effect as it normally would. And that's a big challenge. Commercially speaking, we looked at sales, starting, and depending on what type of property it was, what type of vacant site it was, whether it's industrial, retail, downtown, commercial. And we looked at what has sold over the last couple of years, and devised rates based on those sales.
Okay. So lastly, given this one year, given first of all that you had a tall mountain to climb.
Yes.
Unprecedented in nature. And so a lot of lessons learned when it's the first time out the door. What, what top three lessons learned arm you for what you do differently going forward?
Sure. Time is, we like to attempt to get the maximum amount of effort out of our time going forward, which is why I keep discussing this issue with the board, not being able to plan. Once again, our processes have been greatly enhanced from what we were doing in the past to what we're doing now and what we will be doing in the future. And our resources, getting the people.
Lack thereof.
Yeah, getting the people. One good person can do the work of three that aren't working as well. And if I can continue, I don't want to just infuse my office with people for the sake of having bodies. I want people to be intelligent, knowledgeable, credentialed, and come in willing to work and ready to work. And that's, those are the three things that I think gear us towards success going forward, continuous success. And I'll go so far as to say, we had a monumental challenge. I think people don't really realize...
The scale?
Yeah, coming from never having, doing assessments comprehensively citywide at all, going to 100% of market value, that has never been done before, and educating people on the process and things like that, versus us now already having a certain knowledge base, experience. And even as a city, with the citizens and everyone, having a certain knowledge base of how this thing works, will go monumentally towards our next reassessment, whenever that is.
Okay. Well, thank you. I would not want to walk in your shoes. It's important work.
I got rough shoes, yes. It's the roughest assignment, but it's very rewarding, but it's a very rough assignment, but I cherish it.
A fantastic.
I mean, because what we've done here is historical.
Yes, it is.
And I'm very proud of what we've been able to do, and people sitting behind me who work blood, guts, and glory every day to get this done for everyone.
Sure.
Thank you for your support.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Heenan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sounds like a movie.
Feels like one someday.
We should be talking to some producers, and we can make it here. We can make it here. And look, and I know this is historic. I mean, you're doing a total reassessment, and I think, you know, as Councilman O'Neill has said and other council members, you have a tremendous amount of work, all right, that you have done and need to continue to do. So I commend, you know, everybody that's been working real hard, dealing with people like us drilling you. But we're in response to the citizens.
Sure, I understand.
So I think they've been doing a great job. And, you know, one of the things, you know, that I sat and thinking about as we're reassessing the entire city, is how this kind of communication is being used to our advantage. So how, are we using this opportunity to update the contact information from the owners, particularly vacant and commercial property? You know, where there's misclassification, there's, you know, we're vacant property, we're abandoned property, you know, some properties, you know, could be, you know, commercial since 1968. And, you know, here, you know, there's, you know, multi, it's a multi, you know, residential unit. So are we using this opportunity to update our contact information, you know, as a city, you know, since we have the technology and we have the, for no, all intents and purposes, to feed on the street?
We share information with other departments. I think the streets department is one.
Streets revenue.
Streets revenue. So as we gain data, we go out in the field, we gain data. And every time we do a reassessment, involves field inspections, our data gets better. Other departments' data gets better also. So it's sort of a spillover effect. And so we share that information as efficiently as we possibly can to everyone, so...
And it was my, it was my follow-up question today, was, you know, as we get the new value and, by the way, a first level review, or some of the assessors that are, that are out on the street, do you communicate with other departments? And we said yes. And hopefully, you know, when you give it to revenue, we can get the tax delinquencies that are out there, especially with vacant land. Viewed as separate groups now, do you, you know, does the accepted and rejected FLRs share common traits like housing types, lot size, location, use? And I'm getting somewhere with this. So do they all share common, like, some commonalities, you know, with the, as a result of your, of the first level reviews? People, you know, separately now, things that are rejected, and cases that are rejected, and cases that have a positive outcome? I mean, are there commonalities and traits that are similar that you could, that you can see as we frame a model moving forward for the reassessment? So when you go back and assess again?
Yeah, we have some, some, some common issues that, and as I spoke last year, I stated to Councilman Squillor and Councilman Johnson, that we learn a lot during the first level process. That's why we go through it, because we get an opportunity oftentimes, not every time, but oftentimes, to share information with the taxpayer about their particular properties. And so the things that we learn in this particular process will go a long way. And I would belabor and have one of my assistant administrators come up with they, I don't know about... They can tell you that we learn a lot of things that we can infuse into the next reassessment. It's a constant learning process.
So we're adjusting the model, the fee to the models moving forward?
We're adjusting the characteristics of the property, and we know where the model performs better than in other places, and we know we will have to make adjustments.
Now, would you anticipate fewer appeals next time out due to these adjustments?
I would, hypothetically, that's the key word. Because I don't want to prod everybody to just think that they should just go out. But yes, this, I knew just from a experience background that we would have a lot of appeals. Now, we got less than what an industry might say is typical for even doing something like this, which is well over 10%, and we got under that first level. Overall, I don't think that we may ever get this many, but I don't want to, you know, poke at the hornet's nest, so to speak, and thank people, encourage people to appeal just because I said that. Historically or hypothetically, you won't get as many appeals because of values...
And you're initial, right.
Right, because the market, once again, the market rarely will move in a great fashion, and people will see that their assessment is what they think they could get for it, by a large...
The COD is a measure of the overall uniformity of the model, right? Are there ways to test the uniformity in neighborhoods?
Yeah, we can do, or what we're attempting to do going forward is look at CODs throughout the particular GMAs, through the neighborhoods. And so as we do the next reassessment, we will set up things so we can look at CODs in those particular areas.
Have any of these areas been identified where the model seems particularly error-prone? And, you know, where we might take a look at some of these outside circumstances to what is happening to... To my colleague's point, all right, over here, there are some circumst, outside circumstances that, you know, would tend to, I guess, influence an error or influence another outcome in a positive way.
Sure. And that's what I was speaking of when I was saying I haven't been able to get to the reassessment work that I normally would because we are only addressing appeals. the reassessment work that I normally would because we are only addressing appeals. Once the appeals get settled, we get a handle on them and a schedule and things like that, then we'll be more readily available to doing some analysis to see what's going on in particular areas.
But I think you, you, you phrase it as outlineers, right?
Right, well, we, we look at outlineers and we want to look at typically what is the core of any particular area. So we'll be able to do more of those things if we could, um, get to our annual assessment work, but just can't right now.
Got to get through all these appeals first.
Got to get through, got to get a schedule, got to get through the appeals.
Thank, thank you, Councilman, Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two things. One, you had said that about, hopefully you will assess areas that are hot, that are going to change. You do the whole city, but you're looking at them. How about areas that are declining?
Those two, those would be areas that we, we would look at. We're going to look at anything that is not at, for example, hypothetically, 97% of market value or has a C O D outside of the realm of what's acceptable. So those are areas that'll be declining. Those are areas that are increasing as well.
All right, so, so you would have to, you, somehow you have it broken down into quadrants or?
Right, we have it broken down into, we'll look at it, we'll set up our system if we can to look at it from a G A, G M A perspective.
That's small though, right?
Right, that's small. And then we'll branch it out and then we'll do citywide for all particular types of properties.
All right, but that, you haven't figured that out yet at this point?
Right, we, we can't do any of that work until we, we get through these appeals.
Okay, and I know we had asked for that report. If you could break that down by, um, district, the report about the appeals and the agreement, that would be great. Now, when we go and we talk, work with like the, the P R A and the V P R C and, and we're trying to look at the land values and values of properties, is there a reason why our city departments don't use O P A and they say the O P A values are wrong?
Well, they may look at, excuse me, what another department looks at and how they analyze what they look at and why might be different from what we're doing. We're, we're an agency that looks at things for tax purposes and we have certain, as I was stating earlier, guidelines and, and things like that, that we have to consider. Other agencies, for example, in any given city, a redevelopment authority might be looking at land, but they might be looking at it for what they want to develop it for, not for its current highest and best use. And these are where some of the differences can come in. And so, um, you know, people don't understand that by a large, they might say that, well, O P A and the assessors office should have this value because this is what it, this is what we have on it. Well, you have to understand that we have to look at things from our professional perspective on what we do, which is mass appraisal. And we're going to look at the current use, the highest and best use, and we're going to look at things that have sold, not what a developer said he would be willing to pay for it, but hasn't yet, things like that. So those were, those are areas where some of the differences come in and that's where we have a lot of the, um, the void.
All right, I mean, it seems like when we go, because we're having that issue now, we're, we're selling a lot of the city-owned properties and going through, and it seems like we say, well, how much is it worth? We look it up on the O P A and they said, nah, it's not worth that, it's worth a lot more than that. And then, so, I mean, that's a concern to us too, because if it is worth more than that and.
Can I give you a good example of that?
Yeah.
A great example, that'll be a school. A school on our books right now is a vacant school. It's bricks, it's mortar, it's this amount of square feet and it's in terrible condition. But once a development authority or somebody looks at it, they're looking at it from the perspective of, I'm going to get the zoning changed, I'm going to do this, I'm going to do that, and I'm going to ask for this and that. And so when they start doing that and when they have done that, then we will revise the value. But a lot of conversations are had in a lot of cities about potentially doing things to a lot of properties. And if we acted upon that without it actually occurring, then you have the opposite of a lot of furious people about a lot of properties that never developed and we valued them as though they, they had been already. And that would be wrong from our professional perspective.
So you were saying basically you would arrow on the side of low.
We're going to arrow on the side of what is it right now? And we're going to arrow on the side of what is its zoning and what is it legally able to be right now? And that's a vacant boarded up school.
Okay, so say it was a lot, a vacant lot or an, an abandoned house.
Okay.
So if a vacant lot was there and the city was looking at it to sell it, all right, say it was maybe city-owned or maybe it's, it's owned by an individual who's not paying taxes on it, all right? That, your assessment of that lot is, uh, is just an empty lot. So if the city wanted to sell it, they would what?
What we look at with that empty lot is, is it residentially zoned like all the other properties on the block? It just happens to be empty? What are the values of all of the similar zone properties that are similar size and everything on that particular block? What are the sales that have occurred in that area to dictate to us what that value could be from the, you know, from sales that have occurred in the past? What somebody else might look at it is, well, we're going, we got a verbal commitment from such and such to sell these at this particular rate. And that's where they'll start, but we don't have that yet because it hasn't happened yet. An assessment is driven by largely, on a lot of instances, as to what has happened in the past and what potentially can happen through its zoning and things like that. For example, a boarded up house, if boarded up houses are selling because people think that that neighborhood is going to take off, then they're buying boarded up houses at that rate. But they're buying them at that rate, not at the rate five years from now that people think they'll be.
All right, so one last thing before we move on. At the end of the day, you're not assessing it for what you think it could be sold for.
We're assessing it for what we think it could be sold for based on information that has occurred already, not for what.
What I'm trying to get at is, it seems like what you're basing it for, what it could be sold for, this, when the city goes to sell it, totally disagrees with your numbers on everything. So I'm trying to understand, when we're doing it for the taxpayers and people paying taxes, they're saying, yeah, but that's what O P A says, so we have to pay that amount. But when the city goes to sell it, they're saying, you can't go by O P A's numbers. We have a LAMA system, we have a system that does a better job and we go through there and we'll have an exact number that we want for that property. That's the confusing part when we're, we're telling a residence one thing, but then we're telling other people something different when the city wants to sell something.
We looked at, I know in one particular instance, we looked at a model that was devised by one of the agencies and they had things in there that we typically would not consider as a profession. And so those are some of the things that would make the difference in what an actual price would be. Another good example would be speculation. When people come in, if you got a high-priced buyer who's just trying to buy up a block, okay, and he's, he's got to have that block, I don't want to spill that rate over to everybody else in the neighborhood.
No, you're not spilling.
But, but that's what, that's what we have to consider. Equalization as well as sale price mean a lot in our, in our profession.
Why don't we just go by, if the city's coming up with values for their parcels or what it's worth, why don't, we don't just use that?
I take, I just got some appraisals of some schools that are, are, um, being discussed. And so we look, we're looking at those appraisals and it's a good chance we'll use the data for those appraisals.
That's good, okay.
And, and, you know, two professions, two different professions, looking at things for two different reasons could mean two different values. We're for tax purposes.
Right, but we want to pay, we want to pay taxes on it. This A V I rate was a fair, accurate system, correct? So we want to pay taxes on a fair, accurate value of a property. I think that's the goal.
But, but also understand too that this was the first year of A V I. We have some things that we know.
I wanted to try to give you four years if you remember and it didn't work out.
It will get better year after year as we do reassessments. It will get better as we learn and as we are able to obtain things to help us with those values.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Heenan. Last question. Thank you, Chairman. Just last question. It's, uh, just over the applications for homestead and the loop. I've had a, a few people, I mean, not too many, but a, a few people told me that they were denied filling out their basic information. Their basic information is, is pretty basic, right? It's simple and, um, how is this information inputted into the computer system where they are either, is it, it's either accepted or denied? Is it scanned in or is it physically data inputted in, into, into a computer system?
For both, uh, the applications are scanned in and then we manually review the applications.
Manual review. So there's a few, a few folks, uh, that had contacted my office and I know more so than other districts, um, have been refused because, let's just say, uh, maybe the scanner didn't read it correctly. So if, if somebody put in January, uh, January 4th as opposed to 1/4, uh, it was, it was denied or it was unfounded or rejected. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know what, I don't remember what the, the terminology is that you use is, or, or is that, one, has that been brought to your attention? And two, uh, if you, if it is, is the system correcting itself?
Well, that's, that's why we manually review since we know that the scanning does a fairly good job of picking up handwriting and, um, but, but sometimes even the applicant could put the wrong O P A number. So that's why we manually review each application just to make sure, um, if they're being denied for incomplete, it's because.
Incomplete, that's it.
Something, something's been, something required has been left off. But again, that's what we're, we're going through the application for.
And, and I'm, uh, again, I'm just, you know, as I stated earlier, I'm, I'm just really concerned with the seniors in, in, in the city filling out, even though it's basic information, um, you know, uh, maybe their, their writing isn't, you know, as it was, you know, when, when they filled out other applications, uh, you know, be previous. But, you know, it, it's not reading, it's, it's coming out incomplete and they're being denied because of it. And, and I know that, you know, the information may be there because it's, it's simple and it's basic, it's just not being read correctly by, by the program.
Well, I mean, we, so it does, the information gets scanned in and it's populated into a spreadsheet, but then we actually have the, the actual image of the application. So that's helpful if, if something doesn't look right on the spreadsheet, we can go to the actual image and that captures.
So when, when it's brought to our attention and we just call, we call the office and we just have, have you guys, you know, take a look at the, the micro, you know, picture of it.
Right, yeah, and, and that's, I know we've worked with many council offices, just, I, I don't doubt that there are, you know, uh, applications that perhaps we've missed something.
Right.
And that's why we're always happy to work with the offices and review.
In your, in your free time.
Right.
You know, I, I would, you know, uh, I would hope you get a chance to just take, take a look at those who, who come out incomplete. So you probably have that data, you know, ready and available. So you review all those who incomplete because, you know, I know some of the seniors and it's a generational thing or, or most, most people don't fight for themselves. And, and that's, that's what we're here to do. We're, we're, we're here to help fight for, for people to make sure that, uh, things are, you know, looked at thoroughly, you know, and it could be a simple oversight, of course.
And that is one of the reasons we've also pushed, um, we had pushed the hotline that, you know, is particularly helpful for seniors or, for, for people who perhaps English is not their first language, that they can do the application over the phone. And I know that was, that was helpful for a lot of seniors that they could, um, they didn't have to do the actual paper application.
All right, and I'm just, I'm just looking on one of the budget, uh, pages here that has your mission, integrated property valuation and information systems. Is that the system that, that would, that you're dealing with, you know, on, on the, in, in your, in the office? It's, it's, it's just a, uh, a major objective.
I'm sorry, what is that?
Major, it's just a simple major objective, you know, that.
Yeah, that's, that's the system I'm talking about, about us getting the R F P and everything.
Oh, that is?
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ma'am, don't go anywhere for a second. And let me follow up on that. Will you finish? I'm sorry, Councilman.
Yes.
Okay.
Finally, thank you. Thank you all for your time.
What I wanted to, just so I'm clear, so anything that is first, if it's rejected by the, by the computer, it is going over manually or?
It is.
Okay, before a, a denial is, or a incomplete notice is sent out?
It is, only because we found that while the scanning, like I said, it does, it does pick up the information fairly well. There, there may be an area, if, if perhaps the handwriting's not clear or, um, it, it doesn't read the information correctly, that we're taking a look, um, that it, it may not be picking up the information. So that's why we.
No, I think it's good that you're doing it, but I think we were told earlier, that's not the way it was. So you, so anything before it's sent out as incomplete, it's going over manually, real eyes are looking at it.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Councilman Squill?
Yes, real quick too, just to piggyback on Councilman Heenan's. Your office has been great because we drive you crazy over there with constant emails and calls and, and you get back to us and not always answers we want, but at least you get back to us and, and help us out to help the constituents. I know that initially it seemed like the problems were with commas and other things associated with certain forms. I mean, that was basically with the loop. And nobody knew you weren't supposed to put these added things in there, so they were getting rejected. But now it seems like we're getting a good handle on how that works. If initially though, weren't the letters just going out automatically from the system to the individuals?
Is this for the homestead or for loop?
For the loop.
Marissa Waxman will come up and answer that.
Hi, I'm Marissa Waxman. I'm an Assistant Finance Director and Manager of the Loop Program. And yes, initially, um, we were automating part of that process for the first couple of batches. About three weeks into the processing, we realized that we wanted to look at everything that was flagged incomplete, um, manually before we then went out. So we figured out what exactly was incomplete. We were, that let us catch things, not so much the commas, but sometimes to do the calculation of meeting household income, we needed a number for the number of people in household and a number for your income. And it's very hard for us to divide me, my two daughters and my cat by social security and a pension. And so we were able, you know, that, that really tripped up the computer. But now anything that comes in incomplete has been eyeballed by our staff.
We do appreciate that because I know it was causing major concerns early on when people were getting rejected. We were getting a, a ton of calls, but.
Right.
Again, you have been great getting back to us. I know you think we're a pain.
No, no, you guys are great.
You guys are doing your job over there and we do appreciate it.
Thanks. And one more thing to add about the incompletes, uh, any of the denials that have been sent out since the deadline? If the reason for denial was incomplete, we included an application amendment to give folks another shot at filling that out. And we have sort of increased the training at our call center to really walk folks through step by step. Your staff has been tremendous. All the council member staffs have come to the trainings, watched the training videos so that as many people as possible have been able to help folks figure out exactly what needs to go on those forms so we can get them into the program.
And wasn't it only 10 days though? You had 10 days to get it back?
To get an application amendment back. And that's because as much as possible, we were trying to get folks an answer before yesterday's real estate tax due date of whether or not they'd been approved or denied. The further we push the processing on those, the longer it'll be before folks know exactly how much is, they need to pay. So we're very mindful of that. If folks do have a problem, um, they do still have the option of appealing to the Tax Review Board and they have 60 days from the date of their denial to do that. So if something falls outside that 10-day window, they do still have another option.
And thank you, thank you for putting up with us too, because I know we could probably be a little demanding on your time. But, um, one last question. I know over the five-year plan, it was calculated sort of an increase of 3% each year in real estate revenue coming in. Is that something that we're looking to continue with this year?
In 15, um, in, in 15, the complication goes back to the, the appeals question. So, um, because the appeals prevented us, appeals process prevented us from doing a full assessment, we're really not counting on the 3% growth. The actual growth in the base is about 1.3% and that's just from, you know, new construction and. and, you know, major improvements. We do think though that what you'll see in terms of growth in the budget, the net will be higher than that because some of the appeals will be resolved next year. And we kind of counted them as all lost for this year. So to the extent that they're not completely granted, you'll see some gain in market value, which will get the total, I think up to like 2.7, in that range.
2.7%. What, now, I know we had calculated, we had included in the budget for appeal losses. What, do we have an estimate moving forward, what we believe the appeal losses may be considering the number of appeals?
I think we'll probably go back to the old...
Yes.
Yeah, so kind of back to where it, the level of appeal losses used to be before, you know, we assumed a 50% increase for 14. And if you started in 16, we'll go back to the old level of appeal losses.
And that was...
Like 20 million.
20 million?
Yeah.
Yes. About 20 million?
Yes.
And so we added, we added 30 million for this year, correct?
Yes.
And do you think we'll hit that?
We will, I think, because people who have appealed will pay the amount from last year instead of this year's amount. So I think we'll probably go beyond the 30 this year.
Well, but hopefully, if we get most of these hearings done and we get the coordination done so that O P A can reach out to some of these folks and, and get that all done, they will eventually pay.
They should come back probably in 15.
But, well, by the end of this year, you're, you're talking, you were having everything by June 30th?
In the original projection.
In the original, projection. So that we're using that money up, up until June 30th? That will be used from the budget for the appeal losses? That money will be used up?
Right.
And how about as far as the Homestead? What was the...
The original assumption was about 270,000 Homesteads. Now we're about 230. So that helps offset some of the loss from the appeals.
Okay, and then how about as far as the Loop?
Loop, we had 20 million. Right now, we're looking like we're in the 12 to 13 million dollar range.
So that's also...
That will also help, help offset the appeal loss. They won't totally offset it, I mean, there'll still be some loss.
And wasn't there 10 million dollars for a commercial?
I think there were discussions about that. I don't think that ever, I think we just had the...
I never got it, because I think originally there was, was, there was going to be, I think it was 30 million dollars for Loop or gentrification. And they knocked it down to 20 and threw 10 in for a commercial.
Yeah, and I think there may have been some trade-off with Homestead, but I don't, it was Homestead plus 20 is where we wound up.
The Homestead, the total Homestead was how much?
Um...
Millions.
It was 270,000 times like 400 dollars was the original.
Okay, so we're, now that has to be in the budget every year, correct?
That's correct.
Now, there's going to be an, will there be an increase added, a couple percentage points each year for people who didn't make it or you don't know yet?
I think we've kind of held it flat, but that may, that may go up over time.
Okay, because obviously the gentrification will drastically go down. I don't think we're going to see, unless Mr. McKeaton's going to go in and triple assessments next year, I don't think we'll see that. Many people being eligible for...
We won't see, we won't see more.
Right.
Right, people already in it will stay.
Right.
We just, we won't see an increase above that.
So that will not increase, I mean...
I don't think so.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much. Thank you for your time and appreciate your help.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Green, I want to thank you for sitting in. Had some very important meetings that we had to have. I have about 28 questions that need answering. I'm just kidding.
That was the meanest April Fool's joke of the day.
April Fool's, April Fool's. No, I'm sure that pretty much every question imaginable has been asked today. So there is no other, names teed up, so I want to thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Council is standing recessed until Wednesday, April 2nd at 10:00 a.m., which time we will reconvene in room 400. Thank you.